Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the January 9th, 2017 regular meeting of the Milford Board of Aldermen. Will you please rise and join me as we salute our flag?
(Inaudible)
The item, Secretary, will you please take the role?
Alderman Anderson.
Present.
Alderman Beatty. Alderman Bevan.
Here.
Alderman Beer.
Here.
Alderman Casey.
Here.
Alderman Gurman.
Here.
Alderman Genitasio.
Here.
Alderman Golden.
Here.
Alderman Grant.
Here.
Alderman Hardeman.
Here.
Alderman Shaw.
Here.
Alderman Veccharelli.
Here.
Alderman Vitale.
Here.
Fifteen present, Mr. Chairman.
Fifteen present. We do have a quorum. Thank you, Madam Secretary. The next portion of the meeting is devoted to public comment.
Mr. Chair.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, is it the chief or...
Before you begin that, I would ask for a moment of personal privilege. So, good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I would ask that the Chief of Police, Keith Mello, come forward to represent Milford's finest in his department. The chief is coming from a police commission meeting, so he's got a lot going on right now. But today is an important day nationally, and the city of Milford would like to recognize our fantastic police department with a proclamation on behalf of the city of Milford. Whereas January 9th, 2017 is National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, a day to recognize the integral role that law enforcement officers have in our daily lives. These men and women are the guardians of our way of life and deserve our respect and our support. And whereas each day, police officers across our country go to work with the knowledge they may face extremely dangerous situations. And whereas the city of Milford is privileged to have a police department that is a full-service law enforcement agency with 116 sworn officers dedicated to the highest standards of professionalism and integrity. And whereas Milford's law enforcement officers go to great lengths to ensure that everyone feels protected in their homes, workplaces, and schools. And whereas it is proper that we recognize and thank these brave officers who face the threat of danger every day on our behalf. We recognize our law enforcement for their bravery and heroism and pay tribute to their faithful service. Now therefore, I, Benjamin Blake, Mayor of the city of Milford, on behalf of all of our citizens, do hereby proclaim today, January 9th, 2017, as National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day in the city of Milford, and I call upon all the people of Milford to honor Milford's law enforcement officers for their daily heroic deeds and selfless sacrifice. Thank you, Chief.
If I could just take like 30 seconds, I'd like to thank the mayor and the Board of Aldermen and the entire city of Milford for recognizing the men and women of the Milford Police Department. I know these are challenging times for law enforcement, but this year, and we just left the police commission meeting, we just talked about this, this year, this holiday season, and I've been doing this for a while now, we received so many gifts, gifts, we received so many cards and hearts that were made by students and from all the schools, the middle schools, the high schools, for every single police officer, ornaments for their trees and donations to the department, food and cookies I've never seen before, and the kind words of support that we receive for the community. It truly, it demonstrates what a fantastic community we have in Milford and how supportive they are of each other and of their law enforcement officers, and so we really appreciate that. And so I thank the citizens of Milford for all their support, and I also thank all of you for the support that you've given, that you continue to give us and have given us in the past, and the financial support, because that's what allows us to maintain the sophisticated police department that Milford expects and deserves. So, thank you.
The next portion of the meeting is devoted to public comment. Statements are limited to the legislative function of the Board of Aldermen. The time limit granted to each speaker shall be three minutes. Residents, taxpayers, and electors may address the board at this time. The board encourages speakers not to express derogatory, insensitive, or offensive statements or to engage in personal attacks against individuals. In order to allow everyone an opportunity to speak, I'd ask that everyone please limit their comments to three minutes. Anyone wishing to address the board can approach the podium at this time. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Paul Cavanna. I live at 100 Cornfield Road in Milford, Connecticut. I have the great privilege of being the principal of West Shore Middle School. I am here to humbly ask for your support in the West Shore Middle School renovation project. I would like to thank Honorable Mayor Blend Blake, Dr. Fieser, Mr. Ricciutelli, Mr. Woods, Alderman Hardeman, Alderman Vitale, for their leadership and support through this process. This project will encompass both new construction and renovation to the current footprint. The main office and front entrance will be modernized with security updates. The gymnasium will be renovated with a new stage to host concerts, plays, and award ceremonies. A new band and chorus rooms with a renovated general music room will connect to the stage for our music programs. The media center will be transformed into a state-of-the-art learning center, which will be the hub of teaching and learning for our building. The media center will have an open floor plan with computer labs and maker spaces ideal for generating student learning experiences. In addition, the project calls for two renovated art classrooms, two new science classrooms. West Shore is the only middle school with no science labs. An ultra-motor computer lab, a new exercise room, a PPT conference room, and new resource rooms. The goal of this project is to have a building that showcases the dedicated staff, wonderful students, and supportive parents that make up our school community. Simply put, the building, we need a building that echoes "West is Best." Thank you.
I live at 10 Pine Knob Terrace in Milford, Connecticut, and I am a teacher at West Shore Middle School. I've been there for about 24 years, and I ask you to fund our renovation project. We need a building that mirrors our enthusiasm for learning, because West Shore is a great place to learn. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mary Edo. I live at 57 Gun Street in Milford. I am a born and raised resident of Milford. I have four children that have gone through the Milford Public School System, and I am a teacher at West Shore Middle School. I support the building project at West Shore. I also run an after-school program, and I see this new facility as really helping to capitalize on this space to use not only for instructional time during the school day, but also to enhance our after-school time to keep our children safe during those hours when parents are still at work. Thank you very much.
My name is Maureen Rachio, and I'm at 47 Snug Harbor Road in Milford. I've been teaching at West Shore since it's been a middle school, and I hope you will support the renovation project. I look forward to having the building represent us and what I think we're capable of and what I look forward to. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Alderman Veccharelli, agenda item number three, consideration of minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen held on December 5th, 2016.
Motion was made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number four, there was no special meeting. Item number five, chairman's report. I just hope that everyone in the audience and everyone, our fellow board members, had a very happy and safe New Year, and I hope together we can make Milford the best that it could be in the nears to come. And Mr. Alderman Veccharelli, there is no unfinished business. Moving on to new business, Alderman Veccharelli.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, thank you. I hope this board and everyone in the city of Milford had a very happy holidays, and they're ready to jump into 2017 with both feet. As I look out into the auditorium, I see that our audience numbers, I think, are buoyed by folks that are going to be sworn in to boards and commissions. And as this board knows, the city of Milford is supported and governed by volunteers. We are blessed to have such capable people volunteering their time and their energies to make Milford government work. This city would not be successful if not for the dedication, the hard work, and the volunteerism that the members of these boards and commissions, including your own board, give to the city of Milford. So with that, I do have Board of Aldermen appointments that are specific to the mayor's appointments, which I will read now. But I do ask, Mr. Chairman, at the appropriate time, that you call all the Board of, Board and Commission appointments forward so that they can be sworn in by our honorable city clerk. And other than that, I respectfully request your consideration and action on those items listed in the agenda 8A through 8H. And at this point, I would like to read those names to the boards and commissions that are exclusively mayor's appointments, starting with our Council of Aging, Lillian Holmes, Michael Petroselli, Philip Caparuso, Judge Beverly Straight Kafalas, Conservation Commission, Ryan Keeler, Keith Dunn, Howard Haberman, Inland Wetlands Agency, Stephen Munson, Carol Dunn, alternate Nathan Bukoc, Human Servi-, Milford Department of Human Services, Karen Barnett, Milford Redevelopment and Housing Partnership, Robert Testo, Veteran Graves Preservation Commission, Thomas Cody Jr., and David Derubis. Mr. Chairman, again, if those members could be called forward at the appropriate time so that they can be sworn in. With that, if you do have any questions during the pendency of this meeting, I am happy to answer those. Happy New Year.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no unfinished business. Item number eight, new business. Heyday. You going to read through the retos?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the following appointments. The mayor's appointment and the boards and commissions. The Civil Service Commission, Janice Tattana-Monaco. H. James Hasselkamp. The Ethic Commission, Thomas Mercado. Finance Board, Ryan Lima, Joseph Castagnoli. The Fire Commission, Richard Smith, Thomas Rizzo. The Golf Commission, Ron Peruzzi and George Amato. The Harbor Management Commission, Robert Paselli, Ray Oliver, with alternates Dora Kubo, Kubek, and Raymond Kirschmeyer. The Board of Health, Christine Gonallo. Dr. Mitchell Quintner and Ernest Judson. Historic Preservation Commission, William Silver. The Housing Code Board of Appeals, Joe Baldwin. Human Services, Gina Baglamenti. The Library Board, Toby Zabizinsky, Zabiszki, sorry if I mispronounced that, Constance Gaynor. Telka Defite. The Parks Beach and Recreation Commission, Gary Rowland. The Police Commission, Richard Smith, Gerald Winowski, Sharon Morone. The Sewer Commission, Robert Carroll and Bradford Hubler. The Transit District Advisory Board, Janet Montalbano. The Tree Commission, Brian Mancini, Seni Ricardo. And the Veterans Ceremony and Parade Commission, Gregory Smith, Patricia Dear. The Zoning Board of Appeals, Jeanne Huber-Happy. That's it for, I think that was 8A. Number on 8B.
Can we have a second on that? Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any, any discussion? Sorry. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Veccharelli, agenda item 8B.
Mr. Chairman.
Appointments, yes.
I was under the impression we're going to reorder the agenda to item 8H.
That's the next one, don't worry.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the request for the attached, I'm sorry, move to approve the hereby request for the reappointment of Arthur Stowe Jr. for the Milford City Historian.
Motion been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. At this point, I will entertain a motion to reorder the agenda to move item 8H next on our agenda so that we can vote in all of our boards and commissions before we move on to other city business. Is there a motion to reorder the agenda to move item 8I up next on the agenda?
Submove. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Veccharelli.
Which way got 8H?
8H, all the members that were mentioned.
Okay, this.
What do you know?
I believe, I believe we have to announce 8H.
Mr. Chairman, for these appointments, I make a motion to approve Animal Shelter Commission, Karen Dorney. The Economic Development Commission, Jennifer Clinton. Michael Lynch, Michael Crowley. The Historic District, Catherine Lutz. An alternate, Timothy Chaucer. The Historic District, South of the Green, M. Elizabeth Kennard. An alternate is Christopher Thomas. The Inland Wetland Agency, Lily Flanagan. The Milford Government Access Television Committee, MGAP, Kara Flannery, and Jill Reese. Pension and Retirement Board, Mary Rose Colombo, Mark Totino, Leo Mahoney, Frank Murphy, Anne Mayer, and alternate Julie Keeler.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. At this time, all of our mentioned commissions and board members, please come to the front and get sworn in by our honorable city clerk, please.
Mr. Chair, if our city historian would be brought forward too to be sworn in. Thank you.
Once you've all come up, raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you will uphold your duties and responsibilities as for your prospective boards for the city of Milford, so help you God, or under the pain or penalty for perjury or false statement? Congratulations. If you could just stay here for a moment to sign the paperwork.
We're going to take a five-minute recess until everyone, all the new members have signed in. Thank you. We are now out of recess. Alderman Veccharelli, agenda item 8C.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the request for the attached fiber to the Library Communications Grant and to authorize the mayor, the finance director, and the library director to take all steps necessary, including signing all documents, to effectuate said grant.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Veccharelli, agenda item 8D.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the request, following the approval of the Planning and Zoning Commission dated December 21st, 2016, pursuant to 8-24 of the Connecticut General Statutes, for the acquisition of approximately six acres of land located at 130-150 Boston Post Road, and to authorize the city attorney and mayor to take all steps necessary, including signing all documents, to effectuate said acquisition.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Alderman Gurman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Can somebody, or Mr. Mayor, can you explain maybe a little more details on the land acquisition and what's going to come after that as far as the costs, maybe some projections there? Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, through you to Alderman Gurman. As you know, a year ago, at the January 2016 meeting, a committee was appointed, among those was Alderman Genitasio and Alderman Vitale, to sit on a building committee for renovations, rehab, and a new police station. Our police station, even though it was built back in the 1970s, on day one was obsolete. And our police chief is here, along with members of the building committee, to give us a little bit more background. But since at least the last 20 years, this project has been on Milford's capital improvement plan. The committee was established, and their first charge was identifying whether to rehab and renovate the existing facility on the Boston Post Road or to look for another site. And there was a whole host of things that went into that discussion and consideration and investigation, things like the communications tower. If you moved to a separate site that was further away, that wasn't accessible to that communications tower, it would cost about a million and a half dollars to move. If you built onsite at the existing facility, there would need to be a parking garage, and structured parking has a huge cost associated with it. But again, I'd like to invite the police chief up to give some background, some explanation as to some of the considerations that went into this site. There were sites that were looked at and reviewed all across Milford. The location, the fact that it is centrally located, not on the peripheries of the town, had a huge part in this. The fact that it was visible and near other emergency management locations, also important to this consideration.
Statutes for the acquisition of approximately six acres of land located at 130-150 Boston Post Road and to authorize the city attorney and mayor to take all steps necessary, including signing all documents, to effectuate said acquisition.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. Can somebody...or Mr. Mayor, can you explain maybe a little more details on the land acquisition and what's going to come after that as far as the costs? Maybe some projections there. Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, through you to Alderman Girman. As you know, a year ago at the January 2016 meeting, a committee was appointed. Among those was Alderman Genitazio and Alderman Vitro to sit on a building committee for renovations, rehab, and a new police station. Our police station, even though it was built back in the 1970s, on day one was obsolete. And our police chief is here along with members of the building committee to give us a little bit more background. But since at least the last 20 years, this project has been on Milford's capital improvement plan. The committee was established, and their first charge was identifying whether to rehab and renovate the existing facility on the Boston Post Road or to look for another site. And there was a whole host of things that went into that discussion and consideration and investigation. Things like the communications tower. If you moved to a separate site that was further away, that wasn't accessible to that communications tower, it would cost about $1.5 million to move. If you built onsite at the existing facility, there would need to be a parking garage, and structured parking has a huge cost associated with it. But again, I'd like to invite the police chief up to give some background, some explanation as to some of the considerations that went into this site. There were sites that were looked at and reviewed all across Milford. The location, the fact that it is centrally located, not on the peripheries of the town, had a huge part in this. The fact that it was visible and near other emergency management locations also important to this consideration. But Chief, you have some...a little bit more background as to the site selection for this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to go back, this has been on the capital improvement plan since 1989. I recall in 1981, when I came into the building, it didn't make...it wasn't really remarkable to me, but I remember when they were starting to talk about how the building was too small, and I saw Public Works in their building closets out of...into hallways. And you know the size of those hallways, they're about three feet. Evidence being stored outside in corrugated containers instead of being secured inside in a climate control locked facility. And there's a lot of things that I can talk to you about why the building is inadequate in terms of space. But I'll fast forward to 1989 when it came on your agenda to commission a study to look at whether the department needed additional space. And at that time, that study that was completed in 1989 recommended that 19,000 additional square feet in terms of an addition. But there were challenges to an addition on that site because of the small footprint. And so, they didn't want to build a parking garage, so what they thought they would do is try to build an elevated addition to the building. There was a problem with that because any of the adjacencies and workflow issues would not be corrected. And so, that went on for several years. It stayed in the capital improvement plan during that time. Law enforcement changed, and we'll talk about that in just a second. And then I became chief and looked at this plan, and I felt it needed to be freshened up because I knew that since 1989, that the police department had increased in size, that we had hired additional female officers. I knew that we now have computer forensics, which required us to create a computer forensic lab, which is quadrupled in space. That space wasn't added on, it had to come from within the existing building. I knew that the juvenile justice bill had passed, which meant that we now had to have a separate facility to process and detain juveniles, where in the past, they went into the adult section. We didn't build space onto that. We took existing space within a building that was already too small. I knew that from running the detective bureau, that when we had a major crime and we had no place to process evidence, that we would take a conference room and place evidence to dry, in practice, the evidence. That we'd place crime scene tape over the door, and then you came in the morning, and if it wasn't broken, then you knew that nobody tampered with your evidence, and it was still admissible in court. And we found other space to conduct meetings and have conferences. And I knew that we now...that we...computers had entered...we entered the computer age well prior to that, and we didn't have a computer center, so we created a computer center. Beginning, it was a small closet, now it's extremely large. And I knew that we had entered into a combined dispatch program with limited space, and that we needed more space for that. I'm sorry to continue, but I also knew that the state passed a law that we needed to have interview...our interview rooms needed to be equipped with video technology. And so, we were limited as to where we can do that because we didn't have appropriate interview space, and we used to use a conference room or an interview...or a briefing room and just told people, "It's being occupied." We can no longer do that. So, all these things changed. Law enforcement became more sophisticated, we got larger, we needed more space for a variety of reasons. We also had a lot of mechanical issues in the building. They can be repaired, it's just a question of, is that where we want to spend our money? You know, if you drive around the police department in a few days with that ice, there's going to be crime scene tape around the whole department because six, eight-feet sheets of ice are going to come down and fall. We don't want to fall on anybody, so we put crime scene tape. And we can go on about some of the problems with the building, but again, we can fix that. We just have to know where to put our money. So, when I looked at all these things, and I realized, we need more space, certainly than we needed in 1989. And if we're going to spend that kind of money, why don't we build a facility that Milford can be proud of, a facility that has workflow, appropriate workflow, and appropriate adjacencies, and accommodate, and we can situate ourselves for the future. So, I asked you folks then, back in 2009, to commission another study, and you approved $40,000 to do that. That study was completed back in 2009. Well, most of that study was completed in 2009. And every year thereafter, I took that information and tried to seek approval to build a new building. But here was the problem. Do we want to build onsite and tear the building down? Because once we start doing significant construction, we want to redo the inside of that building, make a building, at the very least, that's handicap accessible because right now, trying to navigate inside that building is almost impossible, and we know that through experience. So, I looked at that and said, "Let's look at building a new building, or let's fix the one we have." Now, we looked for space, and so, this space...we didn't just start looking at this space, this parcel of land, or any parcel of land in the last few years. I've looked for a parcel of land since I became chief 12 years ago. And I will tell you that at that time, and I don't know if Mayor Richard Telly's still here, but one of the parcels of land that I thought was the best parcel of land was the property that we're looking at now on the Boston Post Road. You know, we looked at Milford Center, we looked at Eisenhower Park, we looked at where else can we put it? And the only thing that we saw available was this land that nobody wanted to sell. And so, now, we've come close to saying, "Well, we have no choice but to build on this small existing parcel of land and deal with it as we may," and then this land becomes available. I see it as such an opportunity for Milford. It is a piece of property that has no topo issues at all, which are some of the issues we had in the past. It's close enough to our existing tower, it's centrally located, and it provides us with a piece of property where you could build a facility that you'll never have to build in the facility again. And if you decide that you want to, you'll have the space to do that. It is just a real...it's an excellent opportunity. I've always felt, and I advocated for many years, that we take this prime piece of property that we have, and we sell it, and we put it on the tax rolls, and we take a piece of property down the road, which isn't being utilized at the time. That end of the post road is very quiet. It certainly could use development. And so, as we do the appraisals, we determine that it's almost a wash. If we're able to sell that property and get as much as the appraiser...as the appraisal says we can, and we purchase this property, maybe the land turns out to be a wash. I see it as just an excellent opportunity. I feel after...since 1989 and the 12 years that I've been chief, if we're not going to do this now, it's probably not going to happen.
So, Mr. Chair, through you, to follow up on the chief, he mentioned the wash. The vision is to sell the present police station property once the new station is constructed and underway. We did get an appraisal for that old property, or that existing property, and it came in at about $3.5 million. This is scheduled to be purchased for 4.1. So, the hope is, the vision is, to have this be a wash. We're close to that.
Alderman Genitazio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. Good evening, members of the board. As Mayor Blake mentioned, I am on the building committee along with Chairman Vitro, and I just want everyone to know on the board, as an alderman, I took the taxpayers first. I kept them in mind first and foremost, and the chief did a great job outlining the, you know, the background, the history of this being on the capital improvement plan. I would just like to add that I think...I think that this is a great opportunity, being that this land is available. And as the mayor mentioned, the offset of selling the existing property as commercial property, even if we don't get the full 3.5 million, we're still going to have a significant offset towards this purchase. We've exhausted, in these meetings, every possible alternative as far as adding on to the police station or building a new police station onsite. And I just want to share with the members of the board, so they feel a little more comfortable about voting in favor of this, is it would cost us more money to operate the police station temporarily than it's actually worth doing. We would have to literally take the police station and actually dissect it and move departments across town in order to get this accomplished onsite. And with that being said, to the chief's point, we still wouldn't meet all of the needs assessments. We had a whole thing of needs. We talked about what the needs are for the police department. And with all that being said, just to stay onsite and spend the extra money, we still wouldn't have the police station of the future. This is something that I think is going to sustain for many, many years. I can't really envision this city having to absorb this type of costs moving forward from generation to generation. So, I just wanted to share my thoughts. I'm going to rise in full support of this. I went in there with an open mind, and I think it's the best...I think it's the best-case scenario based on what we've discussed in our committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Genitazio. Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. Good evening, chief. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Having said what you just got through saying, aside from the acquisition of property, what are the projected plans, and how large will the building be, and what is, at this point, a projected cost? Because I think probably you've gone through some plans or had some discussion towards that end.
I don't have a projected cost for you, and I'm not the person asking in terms of construction cost, but I can tell you that in 1989, on the high side, they wanted...they recommended a 19,000-square-foot addition. And now, with all the changes and developments in law enforcement that I've just mentioned, we're looking at approximately an additional 20...25 to 30,000 square feet.
Additional to the 20...
No, including the 19. So, instead of 19, being at 19, we're at approximately 25, between 25,000 to 30,000 feet. So, it's grown from 19 to, on the low side, 25, possibly on the high side, 30. Those are just estimates. We...the needs assessment, I think, needs a little bit of updating because we have to decide, do we want to build...we have a combined dispatch center. Do we want to make a dispatch center that can handle possibly a regional effort where there might be some state money available? Those are things that we need to decide, which would raise the square footage slightly.
Just as a follow-up. So, you're talking on the high side of 30,000 square feet for a police department?
Additional to what we have now.
Additional to...so, you have 19, so...
No, let me clarify that. The 1989 study recommended an additional 19,000 square feet from what we have now. Right.
What do you have now?
We have now, I believe it's in the ballpark of about 43,000 square feet. There's 38,000, I believe, that's usable space.
Save the time of the math. The new building will have what kind of footage?
It'll have...it'll have approximately 62,000 to 66,000 square feet.
Okay, almost 70, 62, 60, 70, 62,000. And so, projected cost on this, we...
I couldn't...I don't know.
I mean, you have an architect, obviously, picked out and all that?
Well, we have an architect that you folks had entered into a contract with to do the needs assessment.
Right.
The next phase requires an additional selection of an architect and a...someone to do the cost estimation and construction manager. So, I think, if I can answer your question this way, I think it's safe to say, there's been a lot of police facilities built around the state. And I think if you look at some of those, what some of the price tags are on those, it might give you a better window into what they are. Now, I don't know what construction costs are today. I don't know what they'll be in a year from now. But I can tell you, the square footage approximately is 62,000 to 66,000 right now.
Do you have any idea what West Haven cost?
Well, I don't know that West Haven is a good example because it was built so long ago. I don't remember. I think we're in a ballpark of around 20. When I look at Danbury and Hamden and some of those departments, New Britain, that are similar in size, those costs are far different. I believe, and since you've asked me to make an estimation, I'm going to guess, an educated guess, and I believe that Hamden had approved in the...about 40-something million to do their building. That building was on the high side. They did some restoration to the existing city hall. So, I couldn't give you a price on what our building is because I just don't know.
And that's fair, because the other day, I just passed by that Danbury Police Department?
Right.
And that's quite a building. And I don't know, I thought maybe you'd have an estimated cost here with...
Honestly, I don't know what that cost, but I think when you look at Danbury, it's about the same size as the facility that we'll likely build. It may be a little bit larger, but I don't have enough information. I'm sorry to really give you any...
That's all right. Thank you. It'll come up.
Alderman Bevan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To the chief, did you mention that after this building is built, will we have room or more acreage for you to put additions on for things that, we'll say in 10 years, that they don't exist right now, but in 10 years, they will. But will there be room for expansion on this?
Well, I can only tell you what the architect told me. And part of what the needs assessment is, is to not only look what our current needs are, but estimate what we'll need for the life of the building. And so, there's already that additional space built into the project. I don't think they would build a building for today's needs. I think they're going to spend that kind of money. You want to project into the future. The architect had told me that he feels, based on the makeup of the city of Milford, and with this building, that it's likely the last building that Milford will ever have to build. However, if you did need to add space, the building would accommodate an additional addition if that's what you decided to do. I would hope that if we do this, that we don't do what happened in the 70s, and that we build something that is adequate now, that if we're going to do it, let's do it right.
Just as a follow-up, if we don't have an architect already for the design, wouldn't it be to our benefit to get an architect that actually has a vision for the future?
Well, we do, and that's what the needs assessment is. We have an architect who builds public...he's, I believe, the predominant architect in the region because he's built most of the public safety facilities. And he...when I say we don't have an architect, we haven't contracted with this architect for the next phase. He has performed the needs assessment, and he has projected what our needs are into the future. He took everything from...and I'd be happy to share a document with you. He knows everything that he can find out about Milford. He knows what our projected growth rate is, both on the commercial side, the residential side, the school population. He's looked at crime trends, and he's projected all that out, not just to mention what a modern police department needs in terms of space. And he provided this document to say, "This is what you need for the future, for the life of the building." And life's a building, maybe, whether they're 25 or 30 years, however they determine the life of a building. So, that...all that has been done. We just haven't contracted him with the next phase to do a more detailed set of schematic drawings and design.
I guess my last question was like my first. After this building is built, and you decide, "Well, needs to come up that we have to put an addition on, not use the building as it is." Is there room to put additions on to this building with the acreage that we're going to be buying?
Yes. In my opinion, there is...lot is adequate. It is exactly what he had suggested, he being the architect, to say, "I believe that this is...this space, that this sized lot is adequate for you for the future, in case we added any outbuildings or anything of that nature."
Thank you, chief.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Alderman Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. Chief, this property currently is undeveloped, and it abuts a neighborhood. Has it been discussed how the building of police station at this property would affect the surrounding neighborhood?
Well, the...one of the reasons I like this piece of property is it abuts commercial. It's, you know, there are neighbor...we are close to a neighborhood now, Wilson on one side and Gun Street on the other, High Street. And this is about the same distance to some of the properties down further on West Avenue. But when you look at Earnor Avenue, when you look at the Boston Post Road, when you look at what's proposed for the remainder of that lot, we're going to be adjacent to commercial areas. I'd like to think the police department's pretty good neighbors, and hopefully that it'll be an attraction to the commercial...potential commercial tenants that want to go in there. Thank you. Thank you.
Alderman Golden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. I'm in full support of the police station being moved and this project going forward. One of the things that I did as an alderman was go to the Citizens Academy. And right there, I learned so much about everything that the police do, what's on that site, but also what the building looks like. And I got to tell you, I mean, I was...I kind of thought it was atrocious, the way it looks now, but it's incredible what you're able to do in that space and what you've...and all the business that you've been able to accomplish in a building that has a lot of repair needs. I also listened to Alderman Genitazio tonight, and he looked at the taxpayers and what, you know, what our needs are. And he took all that into consideration, and I back up what he said. and, and I back up what he said as well. So, um, I just want you to know that you have my full support and I'm always in support of the police, the men and women in, uh, uniform. I think they do incredible job here in Milford and, and tonight was another example, the proclamation that was made. So, and it was well deserved. So I thank you for everything that you do and the men and women in the department.
Great, and thank you for your comments.
Alderman Vecarelli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, good evening, Chief.
Good evening.
I would, uh, like to start off by saying that, um, I was not a big supporter of building a new police department. Um, I wanted to keep in consideration, uh, the taxes for the citizens of Milford. And, you know, I really wanted to be convinced that this wasn't just, you know, on the wish list, that this was something that we definitely needed. And so, you know, I kept an open mind and I listened to the members that were on this investigative committee. And since then, um, I have, uh, uh, I support the, uh, the building of a new station, um, for many different reasons. For all of the consolidated, uh, you can consolidate all of the stuff that you have spread out throughout the whole city. Um, the, 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 the police department has, has branched out in so many areas that you didn't have to need room for, that now you do. I mean, you know, I won't name them all off, but, um, but the biggest thing was being able to take the existing building and try to make that better was going to take a tremendous amount of money and a hardship of being a police department while all these things took place, that it really became obvious that our best bet would be to build the new station. And in doing so, um, we do have a prime location there. We're probably going to be able to sell where you're at already for a decent price because, again, that's a prime location. So, um, this is probably the right time.
Okay.
And we have the right property and we have the right reason. And believe me, if there was a way that we could take that building and renovate it for what you need, I would be all for it. But understanding that, um, without getting into all the details, that, um, it's, would be penny wise and pound foolish, and so for that, I do support the building of a new police station.
Thank you. I agree with you. You're absolutely correct on that, on the relocation costs.
Is there any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, for, for all your information, your comments.
Reorder now and go to Frank.
At this point, I will entertain a motion to reorder the agenda to move items 12A1 and 12A2. Report of ordinance committee next on our agenda so that we can vote on the bonding ordinances. Is there a motion to reorder the agenda to move items 12A1, 12A2 up to the agenda?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion to maiden seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Frank Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The ordinance committee report, um, as follows. A meeting we had earlier this evening in which we considered three separate items. The first of these items, uh, is an ordinance appropriating 9,671,200 for various public improvements and authorizing the issuance of the same bonds of the city to meet said appropriations and pending the issuance thereof, making of temporary borrowings for such purpose. This is the, um, this is an ordinance. It was, um, submitted and recommended through the Board of Finance on December 19th. And, uh, this takes into account, uh, three separate, um, uh, finance subjects, the first being the citywide road sidewalk curb repaving and construction. This is repaving roads, necessary curb repairs, installations and, and other related costs of 4,400,000. The second will be the aforementioned police station property acquisition. The acquisition of approximately six acres of land located at 130, 150 Boston Post Road and other related costs, 4,510,000. And finally, financial, human resources, payroll systems upgrade and technology enhancement, planning, design, acquisition, installation and other costs related to the upgrading, uh, of upgrading the financial, human resources and payroll systems and associated network support infrastructure at a total of 761,200. Uh, this, uh, ordinance request was submitted, was voted unanimously for a recommend, a favorable recommendation to the full board, and I'd like to submit this, Mr. Chairman, in the form of a motion.
Thank you, Alderman Smith. As, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Alderman Bevan.
Through you to Mr. Smith, please. What was the figure you said for the police station? I thought you said it was 45,100. It's really 4,510.
Um, I'm sorry if, if I, uh, if I underestimated it. It's 4,510,000. That's correct. Apologize.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, um, through you to the mayor. Uh, Mr. Mayor, um, the amount of money for the police station with the 4,510, is that a number that we've already negotiated with the property owner?
Uh, yes, not the property owner, but the, uh, person who has, uh, the contract on the property. There is, at this point, a letter of understanding, uh, between the city and the, uh, property owners, uh, person of interest and consideration, but, uh, just, just so this board understands that this is still subject to all the due diligence that would go forward with any property purchase or any land transaction. Um, so this is the negotiated price, but again, it is subject to, uh, some significant due diligence.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair through you. To the mayor. Mr. Mayor, what was the asking price on this property?
It was a negotiated price. Uh, the final amount that was arrived at was 4.1 million.
So they came to, did, it was just a negotiated, mediated kind of thing? It wasn't, they were asking five and you negotiated the four, five?
They were actu, actually asking significantly, significantly, uh, more than that. And I do have to give a lot of credit to the negotiating team, spearheaded by our city attorney's office. Um, just so this board knows, we did, obviously, as part of our due diligence, have an appraisal done, a formal commercial appraisal. Uh, the formal commercial appraisal came in at 4.5 million dollars. So this is significantly less than the appraised value of the property and, uh, significantly, significantly less than the, uh, negotiation started at.
Uh, hopefully our city attorney will sharpen a pencil and we can get a better price on that, right? Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Attorney? Just a couple of questions, either to the mayor or Peter. Peter, what is our indebtedness at this point? What is our total bonding at this point?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Alderman Vitale. The total bonding is approximately 129 million dollars.
And, Mr. Chair, just to follow up, the percentage of our budget, uh, for our debt service is about 6%. We do have a policy of, uh, no more than 10%. Um, we did just, uh, receive an upgrade to our debts, I'm sorry, to our, uh, credit score, uh, and the credit rating agency has actually increased our credit score to a AAA bond rating based on several factors, but one of the ones that the bond rating agencies did highlight was our low debt service. So, uh, this is still a time where we have, uh, pretty, uh, low financing costs. Interest rates are, are still at, uh, a low point. That combined with the fact that we are a AAA bond rated community, uh, does make this a, an ideal time, uh, to leverage some of that, uh, power to, to move forward with some of these projects. Again, every year we bond about 30 million. There have been years like 2006 where we bonded over 100 million dollars for our sewer treatment plant, but traditionally we bond approximately 30 million dollars a year and approximately a third of that, uh, is reimbursable through some, some, uh, grant reimbursement. Uh, that's the case with this bonding cycle, uh, that is before you today. Uh, we have approximately 30 million dollars in grants and approximately a third of that is going to be reimbursed.
Just a follow-up question, Mr. Chair. Peter, what do we pay off in our bonding per year?
Through you, Chairman, to Alderman Vitale. Approximately, on average, per year, i- it's roughly 13 million dollars in debt service costs.
That's per year?
That's per year.
Thank you.
Uh, through you, uh, to the mayor. Um, part of the bonding package has to do with the repair of, uh, sidewalks. Um, recently, some people have raised some concerns that there were, I guess there've been some issues where people were forced to repair their sidewalks. Um, and I don't know whether they caused the defects or not, but, but I assume that this is going to be a, a project, it's going to repair the sidewalks as it repairs the streets, it seems like. So as, as the streets get repaired, the sidewalks get repaired. But, but I'm curious, is, is there a policy or a practice determining how the city goes about, um, forcing some homeowners to repair their sidewalks? Is there, is there a practice that, that goes about? And what is the practice? There is one, or, or policy?
Uh, Mr. Chair, through you to Alderman Casey. It's, it's not a policy or a practice. It's actually an ordinance that, uh, a pass board of Alderman adopted, um, that requires that, uh, adjacent properties have to maintain their sidewalks, their curbs and their gutters. Now, uh, if the defect, if a sidewalk is lifted because of a city tree and the city snow shelf or, uh, is, um, is damaged by a city plow, or for some reason the, the city damages the sidewalk, and at that point, the city is responsible for, um, repairing it. If not, uh, it's the homeowner's responsibility. That's the ordinance, that's the, the policy that's been longstanding for the last many, many decades. Uh, the money that you're talking about, though, is more than we traditionally bond. Last year, we bonded 2 million dollars. Uh, this year, we're looking to increase that for several reasons. If you recall, five years ago, uh, we bonded 5 million dollars for sidewalks and road repaving. Uh, we try to, um, repave approximately 10 miles of road, uh, each year. We have over 250 miles of center lane road in the city, and if you do the math, uh, you need to, if you want to have a decent, um, set of roads in your town, or you, you really have to do it more, more than 10 miles a year. But, um, for many years, we had not even been doing the 10-mile minimum that we had, uh, hoped for. Uh, until the last couple of years, we had done a little bit more because we leveraged some, uh, some federal grants and some state grants in order to accomplish that. This last year, about a total of 15 miles of road got repaved in Milford again, but we were lucky that we had, you know, federal highway money and some other state money, uh, last year in order to accomplish that many miles of road. Uh, this year coming up, I don't think we're going to be as blessed. Uh, if you look at the recent, uh, rollbacks that the state is putting forth to different towns and cities, um, some of that money already is a clawback of, um, road repaving money that we've already been promised for this year. Uh, we've already had 351,000 dollars, uh, repealed or rescinded. Um, that was part of our annual, uh, road repaving asphalt management program. Uh, so we do need to supplement that, um, one, to take advantage of the, the low prices of asphalt. Uh, when, when oil prices are down, which they are now, I don't know for how much longer, asphalt prices are down. Also, the fact that we do have, um, good financing rates, good interest rates because of the AAA bond rating that we have and because interest rates are at a, a real low level still. I don't know how long that will be the case. So we are trying to move forward, trying to repair some of the roads and sidewalks that do need to have, uh, attention paid to them. Um, it really is at the heart of, uh, the municipal mission, is to make sure that you have safe places to walk and to drive.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the mayor, or I see the Public Works Director back there. Um, a couple of years ago, I guess that total budget for the paving was a million dollars, and last year was two, so now it's four. Are we going to have a plan set out, like what roads will be done when, so that the neighborhood can prepare for the paving before it gets done, so they have, they don't have to go back and redo catch basins and piping and all kinds of other stuff after the road's been put in? Thank you.
Mr. Chair, uh, as the City's Public Works Director does come up, um, I'll give you a broad perspective. We do have an asphalt management program. Uh, we try to repair roads, uh, in sections because each time you move milling equipment, there's a cost to restaging that equipment. Uh, we actually have a program that the Council of Governments paid for, uh, where a consulting firm, firm came in about five years ago or six years ago and did an asphalt management plan. We have that on software. Our city engineer and our highways foreman do review that. Uh, each time, we looked to, um, set out a list for roads to be repaved, uh, for each year. Um, we look at the budget, we look at the number of miles that we have budgeted for, and we take the priority list. And, um, there's a couple of things that go into it. First and foremost, the, the age of the road, the conditions of the road, which are, uh, encompassed within that software program that we have. Um, but also, we like to do neighborhoods altogether, not just because, uh, there's an expense and a cost to moving that equipment, uh, but because, uh, if you do, you know, five streets within a neighborhood and, and skip over one, even though, you know, they may be able to have another one or two years left on that street, um, there is a concern that, uh, into the future, uh, that street may not be accomplished, and, uh, we do try to get neighborhoods that are all together. Um, that being said, uh, there are times when you do skip over streets because they have five or 10 years left on the life expectancy of that road. Uh, but that's, again, the broad perspective. For some more details, our Public Works Director, Chris Salee.
Yes, thank you, Alderman Gurman. Yeah, our plan is to actually do some preventive stuff, go into the neighborhoods that we deem are, are a priority and fix anything that needs to be fixed. But during the milling part or preparation, sometimes you uncover things that are unforeseen. Uh, so sometimes that happens. Along with, we've milled or we've paved some streets, uh, and then there's been emergency work. As everyone knows, recently, uh, there was two, uh, water mains that, uh, broke over the week. Uh, there's gas pipes, issues that come, come up. Uh, so sometimes there's emergency work. It's not intentional, um, but it happens. Uh, one of the things, uh, the Southern Connecticut Gas, over 50% of the customers have inside meters. Um, and for whatever reason, if they need to shut those meters off, they have to put them outside. So if it's a new road and they have to put a new meter on it, it has to go outside. So it does cause some issues on some of the new roads. But we're trying to work with that. We have a joint utility meeting, uh, and I think it's going to be in February. Uh, we'll go over that and give us, hopefully we'll have a preliminary list of the neighborhoods we're going to do, uh, and, and get aggressive and, and try to do it. We appreciate your consideration. The town is definitely in need of funding this. Um, truthfully, I've made it very well known that, uh, over the last 10 years, the, the road paving, uh, in the city has been underfutted substantially, and this is really a, a desperate thing for us to try to get our roads in better shape.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Director Salee. Um, so, I mean, no resident's going to complain if their road is paved. It, it's something that, you know, everybody enjoys. My only concern with this is that, uh, it, it keeps doubling. And we went from a million to two, now two to four. Uh, 2016 was great with the amount of roads that were paved. Are, are we going to be able to double the amount that we did in 2016 and 2017 with this doubled amount?
Yeah, Alderman Grant, if I could explain, you, you're 100% right. Um, it really depends on the road. An example, I think the mayor explained this once before, Wheeler's Farms Road, when it was done, the depth, the width of the road, it ate up a ton of asphalt. So some of the smaller roads, narrower roads will get more, more linear feet, um, but some of the wider main roads, obviously loses up a lot of asphalt. Um, truthfully, the town should fund, Abudding Towns funded close to 4 million dollars a year for their asphalt pavement. And we need to, we need to fund at least 16 to 17 miles. And we need to, we need to fund at least 16 to 17 miles a year. Over the last 10 years, you guys have been nowhere near that amount. So not that it's a makeup, but we really need to look at it as a whole process, and try to get every year a minimum amount. Last year, you did $2 million. We did a lot of work with that $2 million because asphalt prices were so low, and we anticipate prices being fairly low again this year, but that could change. So there's a real need in the city.
Thank you. And has there been any discussion about, instead of bonding the money each year, to actually take and have it be a part of the Public Works budget?
Mr. Chair, through you, there is a portion of the Public Works budget that does call for asphalt management, but it's a small portion. We actually derive our total paving cycle for each year out of three different pockets of money, in addition to the operating budget through Public Works. One of those pockets of money, though, is LOSEAP money, which is a grant from the state that we've already had taken back from us this year, and we can't count on for next year. The other big pocket of money is Town Aid Road, another grant that we normally receive. Again, absent clairvoyance and knowing what the legislators, leaders will do this year, we can't count on it. We can't expect that money. That's one of the reasons why this request is a little bit more than in years past, is because we don't know what the state budget is going to be at the end of the legislative year. And two of the pockets of money that we do utilize and identify for asphalt management for our annual pavement program are tied to those grants.
Thank you.
Alderman Vecarelli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just like to comment and say that the improvements throughout the city in regards to the sidewalks has really been a very nice thing to have happen, especially the handicap accessibility to the sidewalks from the roads. And where the sidewalks always had like a curb where, you know, if you were riding a bicycle, or you were in a wheelchair, you'd have to jump the curb to get onto the road, and vice versa to get on the other side. And throughout the city, now many of those have been replaced where they've cut those down, leveled to the street, and even put like a, kind of a rubber mat kind of looking thing that kind of helps in the gripping of getting up and down on the sidewalks. But I've noticed throughout the city that it is a very nice improvement for people, the elderly, and for, you know, even for the kids riding their bikes and people with wheelchairs. It certainly makes a lot easier for people with the wheelchairs not to have to ride in the road. So also with the certain areas in the town that have long sidewalks that would go from, let's say, one location of importance to another, the connectivity there where we might not fix both sides of the road to make it a full walkway where you didn't have to walk in the road in one part, or one part there were no sidewalk. And I notice now there's much more easily to walk from point A to point B on long distances to be able to get there safely. And it just didn't happen willy-nilly. It happened because we considered these things, and we took action. And I take a lot of pride in seeing these things taking place in our city that we're responsible for, because it does make our city a lot nicer, just to be able to... Anyway, not to be long-winded, I really like it. It's taken some money to do it, but it certainly, it looks great, and I think it's helping people out quite a bit. And one of the things that I've come across in my years of experience is that, yeah, it does seem like there is a life, a certain lifetime expectancy of these roads. Yeah, I noticed like on, I'll take Lafayette, for example, it just seems like it starts breaking down, and you patch it, and you patch it, and you patch it, but it's like, it's just, there's a certain life to that asphalt, and then, once it's kind of shot, we spend a tremendous amount of time and effort just patching, patching, patching. And in the meantime, people getting their cars ruined. So, you know, it's not something that we wish that we didn't have to do. It's something that we really do have to do because the roads break down. I don't know if it's like a 20-year or a 30-year life expectancy for these roads that are traveled, you know, moderately, but I do see they just, they do break down, and you're not going to just patch them anymore. They got to be replaced. So for us to consider this and to be able to recognize this, I really do appreciate it. I think it's money well spent. Thank you.
Alderman Ginatasio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. Good evening, Director Saley.
Good evening.
I'm a little reluctant, to say the very least. I'm listening to the mayor on one hand, you know, and he's giving us the update with the state as far as rollbacks and the money that we usually get that we're not going to get. And then, on the other hand, we're spending more than usual. So I'm having a hard time with this, and I know that you've got a lot done with $2 million, and you said it yourself. So I want to ask you, based on this number, how many more miles of centerline road are you going to be able to pave for twice as much money? Because we paved, I think it was $2 million you mentioned was the last cycle? So how many more miles can we expect based on the market?
I anticipate paving between 18 and 24 miles.
Over and above?
No, that's the total amount for next year. That's our goal.
And then typically, with the $2 million, we paved, what, 15 miles?
We paved a little over, right around 13 miles. Now, again, it depends on the width of the road and the location of the road. And I'll say this, the roads in this city are not in the condition they should be. And I know it's a lot of money, but infrastructure is a critical component. Right now, we're redoing the roof down at the Margaret Egan Center. We have our guys working there, rebuilding the brick on the outside of the building because the roof was leaking for so long. And you guys last year authorized us to use some of the monies, the grant monies that we could. Infrastructure is critical in this city. And I know it's not easy to fund it, and I know the taxpayers, but on the flip side, people want good roads. And, you know, I don't think anyone on this board can say that our roads are in great condition. It's not one of those things that you can kick the can down the road. It's something that we need to fund, and it's great value right now. That's the most important thing. And we're going to get as many roads out of that $4 million, if you authorize it, as we possibly can.
And I do appreciate your persistence. However, do we need to do it all at this, all at once? I mean, you said yourself that historically, we've done maybe 10 miles, but now we're doing, you know, if we moved forward with, say, another $2 million, we'd still be ahead of the game by five or six miles. I just think, based on the economic reality, we might be, you know, pushing it a little bit. I mean, we have other things before us. This isn't the only thing. It's not like we're not going to pave. It's a matter of how much paving are we going to do? And I think we have to be realistic in how we approach it, and maybe the number's a little too strong. It's a little too strong for me because I have to look at the whole picture. It's just not one component. And I agree with what you're saying. I think we've come a long way, and it's, you know, due to the credit of this board and to your efforts as well. I just think maybe, you know, it might be more advantageous for us to maybe, you know, not do as much as you plan on doing. Did you have this number in mind prior to what came out of Hartford as far as the rollbacks and the spending, the cuts?
We anticipated a rollback on, up in Hartford. I didn't anticipate it to be in the operational year this year. I actually wanted $6 million, and I'll explain why to the board. The city, for the eight years before I started this job, underfunded the position, underfunded the account substantially. They did under three miles a year. We need to pave 16 miles a year to keep us in a condition where our roads are in good condition. They haven't done it for years. So it's a priority, it really is. Not that education is a priority, I understand that, police is a priority, but if you can't get to and from where you need to go without an infrastructure system that works, it's not going to, and I just want to make sure I'm clear, this isn't like a luxury. This is something that really is needed in the city. And it's not just one neighborhood, it's across the whole town, that we really need to go be aggressive and go into the areas. And as the mayor explained, getting into neighborhoods and redoing the streets and the main corridors also. And I'd appreciate you to at least look at it, because I think $4 million is a good, fair number, especially in the reality of where we are.
Okay, but on the other hand, you did mention that 16 miles is sufficient, and if we scale it back to 16 miles, it's not going to cost us $4 million. And, you know, I made it here tonight, okay? I mean, I didn't take a horse and buggy. So, you know, I just want to make sure that...
I'll answer that question. If you average three miles a year for eight years, it's 24 miles. And I'm not saying that you can't get here, but the amount of complaints from residents in Milford about the roads, it's a pretty high number, and people are looking for that type of work, and it's really, it has been underfunded. You may not believe it, but it has been.
Okay. I just want to make note that since you became our director, you've been doing a great job. However, we've been spending a lot of money in certain areas in that department. So if you could maybe reconsider, that would be greatly appreciated as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Alderman Anderson.
Through you, sir. I wasn't going to speak, but I feel the need to weigh in. I have a different way of looking at this, which is that I'm aware that the director had wanted an expenditure of $5 to $6 million. I certainly wasn't going to be a party to that, and it was pared back to $4. The way that I view it, given that the Federal Reserve recently raised interest rates, and they're likely to do so again, we're buying this service at a cheaper rate. We can bank it, in effect. And then it's up to this body, along with the administration, the director, to decide which streets are paved, which sidewalks are repaired, and how many roads, or how many linear miles of road, roads are done. But in effect, we're putting money into a bank account at a cheaper rate, and for me,
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just quickly, one comment is, I think Alderman Ginatasio correctly noted that the taxpayer is paramount in his considerations, but as you pointed out, Director Saley, the infrastructure of this city has been largely, not neglected, but deferred quite a bit throughout the years. I don't think this is particularly a unique observation on your part, but at the rate we're going, and I have to admit, I travel around this area, and the streets in Milford are in need of repair and have been for quite a while. And we, when you drive around the city, you almost know some places where you're trying to come home. You know where to slow down because you're going to hit a pothole, or there's going to be a curb that's been taken out or something else. You become familiar with it. These are things that do need to be addressed. Infrastructure, our responsibility is to the taxpayer, but it's also to the common good of the community. And the first thing I asked Mayor Blake when he was elected is, what is the most prevalent question we get? And as aldermen, usually has to do with sidewalks and streets. You can take care of that in removing the snow. That takes care of a lot of the principal concerns people have. So I think it is important that, in this case, we come to the beginning of the year with these bond issues, and I know they're painful, and it's a lot of money out of the city bond service and the cost to its citizens, but it's something that we have traditionally done and need to do. It's our responsibility to not always look for ways to defer these expenses. We have to do it. Even our, even our incoming president has professed a need for improvement of infrastructure, and it's long overdue. That's my observation. My second point on this ordinance, because there are three parts to this ordinance, and even though it's a small portion of it, I know people came out tonight, and I think it's important that we address it. The HR payroll upgrade and technology enhancements, this is going to be a question I'm going to ask the mayor, but perhaps our finance director, our HR director, could give us a little background on that, the need for it, something about the chronology leading up to it, and why you feel it's important that we approve this allocation.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Alderman Smith. We've have talked a number of times about the need to upgrade significantly the city's financial and HR payroll systems. This project was first contemplated in 2008, and now, after waiting for almost 10 years, we are ready to go forward with it. What we are finding now is that the landscape has changed significantly. We are using New World Systems. We've used this product. It's an AS400 IBM server-based product, which I've explained to the board in the past, will eventually become obsolete or be no longer supported. The number of customers on this platform is very small, and we've been using it since, I believe, 1988, '89 is when the system converted. So it's almost 27 years that we've been on it. We've maximized all we could out of it, and it's really time to go forward and provide the adequate funding to convert the entire system and bring it up to where it needs to be in these modern times. And with the requirements that we're constantly faced with from the state, federal government, with all the grants that the city is doing, with all of the capital projects that we're doing, with all the changes to the union contracts and benefits that we've been doing, it's just long overdue. The company that's well-known in this area and the country, Tyler Technologies, I believe it was a little over a year ago, purchased and bought New World Systems, so they are now the current owner. They also own a product called Munis, and it's their flagship product. The Munis platform or software is the predominant platform that most Connecticut cities and towns use. And one example is the Uniform Chart of Accounts Project with the State of Connecticut. The state, when they designed the mapping tool, they had Munis in mind, for example. So when we looked at it, we had initial demos with New World Systems back in 2008. Obviously, in 2014, those demos were, needed to be refreshed, re-looked at, and so we brought in New World Systems again, took a hard look at it. And then when we were about to embark, the merger, the purchase of New World by Tyler occurred, and that caused us to really sit down. I had numerous meetings with Gene, our MIS director, held a lot of meetings with our HR director, our city accountant, and members of the core management team to really look at this carefully. We then agreed, we talked with our auditing consulting firm, Bloom Shapiro, who has, for a number of years, recommended in their management, in their letter to the board, the need to significantly upgrade our financial and HR system. We all had many discussions and ultimately performed an abbreviation... We all had many discussions and ultimately performed an abbreviated software selection process, which culminate, culminated in September, where we had Munis and New World, in essence, compete with one another and provide all-day demonstrations each. We brought New World in for one day and Munis in for another full day. We had members of both the, all of the finance department, key personnel, MIS, HR, and members of other city departments came in to take a look, and we analyzed those, those two systems. So with that, Gene and I sat down, we worked together, looked at the numbers carefully in consultation with our auditors and consultant, and we came up with the necessary funding that would be needed to really move this project forward and get it done. A project that will take approximately 18 months to get done. So that in a nutshell is a broad overview of the history of the project, and I really implore this board to give it its full support, to ensure that we provide the city not only with the necessary tools to perform all of the operations properly, but to mitigate the risk of these systems not only not being supported, but the risk that they will not be able to do all that we need them to do. Thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, through you. In addition to Director Erdisi's very thorough explanation, we do have some other subject matter experts with us today to talk a little bit more about the software. If you do have questions, we have our MIS director, Gene Lasik, who's, who's here to talk about the technology component of this. Also Jeff Grandy, our consultant for technology issues. We have our HR director, Tanya Barnes. We have our city accountant, and we have Je- Jeff Ziplo from Bloom Shapiro, who's helping us manage the transition, if you do have questions.
Is there any more discuss, oh, any more discussion than Alderman Genitazio?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, to Mr. Erdisi. Good evening. Peter, just so I'm clear, I know that we funded your department, I know the, you got that position that you wanted, that I was totally against, but congratulations. But the other thing was, didn't we fund you for a systems upgrade? Is that, was that a different type of upgrade? Or is this, are we still talking about the same project?
Yes and no. We are still talking about the related project, but the funding that was approved in 2008, with all due respect to my predecessor who helped put that together, in hindsight, nine years later, was, was understated. Even if we had gone forward at that time, I would, in the final analysis, looking at everything today, in discussions with our MIS director, even that project would have not been enough to get us where we need to be. There, there's also related IT enhancements that need to be made to the city's IT infrastructure as well, that go in conjunction, not only with this project, but to support the other systems that support police, fire, the other city departments.
Okay, thank you. So it is related, but not entirely?
Not entirely. I would imagine, looking back, that that money was initial seed money or the initial investment, but plus this investment will really help us to get the project done.
Okay, to get it done, to finalize it. So after this, there will be no more add-on?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. We, we definitely hope that there wouldn't be any add-ons. We will do our best to not only maximize this combined funding, but, you know, we, we are always at the, with the philosophy that we only spend what we need to spend and what we need. So I hope we don't even spend the entire amount. But I cannot promise or guarantee that, you know, there wouldn't be any future funding, but that is not our goal. Our goal is to get the project completed with the existing, with this funding approved and the prior funding. It is our goal to get it done and done completely. Thank you.
Thank you for your explanation. Mr. Chairman, at this time, I'd like to call a five-minute recess, please. Thank you.
Five-minute recess. That was a long enough recess for everyone. Just to remind everyone, we're still on discussion for agenda item 12A1. Is there any more discussion on that motion? Alderman Beer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the mayor, or maybe Peter. I think so far, what I understand is we bond about $30 million a year, and we pay off about $13 million per year. So quick math means we're accumulating debt at a rate of about $17 million per year?
Mr. Chair, through you to Alderman Beer. A good portion of that is also reimbursable through grants. In this case, there's over a third of that money is being reimbursed through grants. But again, you look at the percentage of the overall budget and what our debt service is, and it has been at 6% I think for the last, well, at least the last many years that I've been involved in, I've been involved, local city government, for about 14 years, almost 15 years. So that has actually stayed the same or gone down. And now, we have had years that have been, again, more than $30 million. I'm not saying that that's the, the end-all, be-all. We have had years like in 2006 where it's been over $100 million. We have had years where it's been significantly less. At least for the last five years, though, we've targeted $30 million because that keeps us in line with our payback and keeps us in line with the 6%, the 6% that we're at. Again, the policy that the board established, or the city established, I should say, is a 10% policy. At one point, we were at that 10%. We are about half that, or a little bit more than half that. So we are on a pretty firm financial footing at this point, as recognized by the rating agencies, who pointed out the fact that Milford has a low debt service as one of the reasons why they increased our credit score from, to a AAA rating.
I'll just follow up on that. So we still are increasing our debt year over year. I understand the, the rating agencies are okay with that. I'm just not sure that I'm okay with that. And what I'm proposing, I don't know if anyone does this in other cities and towns, but if we're going to spend two to four million dollars a year paving roads, why not put it in the budget? If we're going to spend 10, 20 million dollars fixing schools, why not put it in the Board of Education budget? I'd just rather see, if we're going to pay for this stuff every year, why can't we maybe not budget all of it? Can we budget a portion of it? And some of it shows up so that we're paying every year for the things that we're going to spend the money on anyway in, in the budget, rather than just bonding and, you know, kicking the can down the road? So eventually, someone's going to have to pay this increased debt.
Mr. Chair, I certainly agree with the, the overall point made, but a lot of these projects don't happen during the course of a 12-month fiscal year, which we have to budget for. These projects happen over an extended period of time. For example, the, the software upgrade that Mr. DC talked about has an 18-month timeframe of when it's expected to be completed. That's over the 12-month period of time. And while there's, you know, ways that we could, could manage that, we don't actually pay these bonds until we get an invoice from the contractor. So this is part of our budget. This is what we have done, at least for the last many, many decades. A very small portion, 6% we allocate towards, towards bonding because that's the way that we have, for many, many years, invested in our infrastructure. Again, only projects that have a 20, a 30-year life expectancy do we bond. We don't bond projects that are going to be part of our operational budget, projects that, you know, have to do with wages or things of that nature. Only projects that are going to last the life of the bond. And that has been the, the same consistent fiscal management plan that has been employed not by, not just by, you know, me, but by the past nine mayors before me.
Any more discussion on the motion? Alderman Veccharelli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just like to maybe reiterate what the mayor has already said. Right now, we have a AAA bond rating, so for us to borrow money, it's less expensive. And also, the price of asphalt is down substantially. So several years ago, the price of a gallon of oil was, was upward of $4 a gallon. Made many people, forced them to kind of maybe get new furnaces and cut down on how much they drive. I mean, it was, it was something. But then a lot of people started to invest. They said, "Well, if it's $4 a gallon, let's go out, we'll find new oil, we'll find new gas," and that's what they did. And as soon as everybody got invested, right up to their neck, and OPEC just dropped the barrel, dropped it right out, "Let's sell it for a dollar a gallon." So, you know, I, I think I bought oil this summer for a $1.25 a gallon. And they'll probably keep it down low like that just long enough to put all these people out of business and make sure that they'll never do that again. And right now, we have an opportunity to buy this asphalt at a cheap price, to increase the number of miles that we pave, AAA bond rating. This is a good time to do it. When the price of oil goes up, then we're going to have to take a harder look at this and say, "We may have to cut this back and be a little bit, a little bit stingier in how many roads we pave." But in looking at the roads now, as you heard our Public Works Director state, we are behind the eight ball. We haven't been doing the necessary paving to keep us up to par. This is the time to do it. So I, I understand, we want to get the, make sure that our taxes are stable and they don't, we don't raise them, but this would be pound, penny-wise and pound foolish not to move forward with this plan here because it is a savings in the long run. Thank you.
Alderman Genitazio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to make a comment based on the commentary. I am in favor of two out of three of these proposals before us, the land acquisition, as I mentioned earlier, and I'm going to rise in support of the payroll system upgrade as well, as long as we can finalize that, hopefully. The, the paving, I, I guess, you know, to me, it, it seemed a little excessive, but based on the discussion, it seems like originally, it could have been five to six million dollars at the high end. So I guess I should be thankful that it's only $4,400,000. I just thought that, you know, based on this number that was presented to me tonight, I don't have all of the background information on this, but I thought maybe, you know, if we could have cut it somewhat, you know, based on what we know as far as grants that we're not going to get, but it doesn't seem like, I don't think that, that would have the support from this board. So I'm willing to move forward as long as we can be assured, as the Public Works Director stated, that we're going to get 24 miles worth of, you know, centerline road paving done. I guess, you know, I would be in favor of this whole package as presented because the fact is, I can't really go in there and, you know, pick something out that I'm not happy with. And overall, I'm happy with two out of three. I would have liked to see it be a little bit less, but I guess we're just going to have to do, you know, what the board pleases at this point. So I'm willing to, to support this as presented. Thank you.
Any more discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Roll call vote. Madam Secretary, please.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman Beatty?
Yes.
Alderman Bevan?
Yes.
Alderman Beer?
No.
Alderman Casey?
Yes.
Alderman Germin?
Yes.
Alderman Genitazio?
Yes.
Alderman Golden?
Yes.
Alderman Grant?
Yes.
Alderman Hardiman?
Yes.
Alderman Shaw?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Veccharelli?
Yes.
Alderman Vitale?
Yes.
14 yes, one no.
14 yes, one no. Motion passes. Alderman Frank Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Ordinance Committee convened earlier this evening and considered a ordinance appropriating $23,697,929 for various school improvements and authorizing the issuance of the same in bonds of the city to meet said appropriations, and pending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purposes. This follows a resolution by the Board of Finance dated December 19th recommending said appropriation and bond issue. This is, takes into account the various school improvements. Chief among them is the addition renovations at West Shore Middle School in the amount of $17,845,929. And then four different roof replacements, a total of $1,710,500 at John F. Kennedy Elementary, a total of $1,534,500 at Live Oaks Elementary, a total of $1,111,000 at Meadowside Elementary, and a total of $1,496,000 at Orange Avenue Elementary. As I said, the Ordinance Committee met earlier and voted unanimously to recommend said ordinance to the full committee for your consideration and vote, and I'd like to submit that, Mr. Chairman, as a motion.
And motion has been made. And second, is there any discussion? Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. Just to, just to make it very clear on this motion, I, I am, I'm going to be, be in favor of this motion, but I need to go on record by saying that I, being a part of that committee, I'm not really enamored by all of the aspects of that particular plan. And for the roofs, I don't think that any new board, which elections will be taking place next year, any previous board is not, or new board is not committed to what the previous board has put in place. And I, I feel as though there's going to be down the road, there're going to be some school closings. When you look at, when you look at populations of some schools that are 300, below 300, and those same schools many years ago, were holding 650, 700 kids. I think that we don't know what's going to happen within the next five, seven years. There's been no long-range planning given to us, and there's a new board coming in, so I can't see putting new roofs on schools that might be sold. I know somebody's, there was discussion that putting a roof on a building makes it more appealing to sell. Well, in my estimation, if somebody's going to buy a building, they're not going to keep that building there with a new roof, they're going to knock it down, put housing up or-
They're going to knock it down, put housing up or parking lot, et cetera. But I just wanted to go on record just indicating that fact, but I will be in support of this. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, through you to Alderman Vitale. As a follow-up, as you know, we have eight elementary schools. Four of the roofs were done repaired last year, and the other four are being proposed for this coming summer. Each of the elementary school roofs were done about the same time, thirty years ago. They have a life expectancy of about twenty years. We were able to get a little bit more out of it because we did reseal the roofs about ten years ago, not a full replacement, but just a sealant that was put on to try to eke out some more life out of those roofs. These are all at a critical juncture right now. There have been issues in those schools with the need for the new roofs, at least the four that still have not been done. This is an investment in the infrastructure, to your point about a future plan and the possibility that schools may be closed. As you know, there was a reorganization and reconfiguration committee that did meet over the course of several years, and they did take a long, hard look with a lot, a lot of discussion and a lot of study and consultants and community input and input from various stakeholders in the community, and again, came forward with a determination that at least for the relatively near future and into the distant future, the present configuration was what they were going to go with. So again, this board, that's the direction that we have to go with. We have to go with the direction that that reconfiguration committee came up with, that the Board of Education then approved. We don't know what's going to lie into our future, but we, all we could do is use the best resources as our guide. But to your point about your hesitation, I can understand it, but again, we do have to do the prudent thing and move forward to protect the infrastructure, to protect the schools that at this point are at a critical juncture. These roofs are over thirty years old. So if you do have questions, we do have our architects, we do have Matt Woods, who's been the chair of the Permanent Schools Committee now for over twenty years, so he does have that historical perspective. He has that insight as to what we've done over the course of the last several decades. We do have the principal of West Shore Middle School, as well as some teachers from West Shore Middle School and parents from West Shore Middle School. We have, in addition to Mr. Vitale and Mr. Hardiman, who are on the Permanent Schools Committee, we do have Mr. Nuno and, again, Mr. Silver from Silver Petricelli. And I think that's all. But they have, again, some more insights into these school construction projects.
Just as a follow-up, Mr. Chair, to you, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate what you're trying to say, and I appreciate the equity across town, the East Shore Middle School and West Shore Middle School, Harborside Middle School, but my contention is with the new roofs and the fact that the Board of Education has not given us any rock-solid five, seven-year project or plans to say, and when you look, common sense, common sense. We have eight schools. We have schools, three hundred and less kids. There's got to have to be something going on in planning and creating some kind of strategy that will move our education system forward. And to do it with eight schools with less than three hundred kids in each of the schools is, makes me wonder as to the plan and the future of education in Milford. I think we could do something better. I think that, but this is apart, apart from anything else, I think this is a piece that the Board of Education has to answer anyway. But as far as I'm concerned, I have reservations about putting, especially on those schools, on one of the schools that was mentioned in the last package, and the first package also, when we did the four school, four building roofs prior to this. So again, I said what I needed to say, and I just wanted to go on record saying that I'm not enamored by that decision, but I will vote for the, vote for the motion. Thank you.
Alderman Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to devote some attention to the West Shore Middle School proposal, which I happen to favor, and I wondered if Mr. Woods or Mr. Silver could answer a couple of questions with regard to the reimbursement method. Is it true that we do not stand to gain reimbursement for the roof work, or roof replacement on the elementaries, but we do with respect to the West Shore Middle?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. I'm Matthew Woods. I live at forty-two Nob Hill Road. I've been chairman of the Permanent School Facilities Building Committee, actually for about twenty-eight years. Alderman Anderson, all of the projects are eligible for state reimbursement. The exact percentage, we don't know yet. It has been historically in the vicinity of fifty percent, and that goes to what I believe Alderman Beer was referring to earlier, where the city pays a certain amount each year to reduce the bonds, and a balance is reimbursed by the state of Connecticut, which makes up the difference. I don't know the exact percentage of reimbursement that we'll get for the roofs or West Shore.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, through you to Mr. Woods. Thank you for that explanation. I wondered if you could detail for me the discussion relative to the parking alternatives? I really want to focus on the parking alternatives as well as the air conditioning issue. I don't need to be, in other words, the reason why I'm focused on those two is because I would just like to be updated with regard to those two issues. I don't need to be sold on this because, as I stated, I'm supportive, and I'm strongly supportive. Even before there was a West Shore project, I've been an advocate for West Shore having the parody of East Shore and Harborside. And quite frankly, West Shore needs the attention because that's where the population is in this city.
Well, focusing on the air conditioning first, the committee discussed air conditioning the entire school, but we decided that that was one of the initial value engineering decisions we had to make in order to save about two million dollars. So we will be air conditioning all of the new construction, but we will not be air conditioning the rest of the school.
So just to follow up, so we're talking about a difference of about two million?
Correct. And that's actually a topic that Mr. Bradbury has been advocating for years, because I wasn't aware of it, but if a student brings in a doctor's note saying that the student needs air conditioning, then the Milford Public Schools has to install a window air conditioner or two in that classroom. And they have employees that move air conditioners hundreds of times, and it's very expensive, but it's less expensive than a lump-sum, two-million-dollar project. But he has been advocating air conditioning all of the public school classrooms, if possible, but it's just too expensive, so he had to make that decision and cut it. With regard to the-
That's unfortunate.
It is.
Because I see a need for phase two. Go on.
With regard to the parking, we consumed a number of parking spaces with the expansion of West Shore Middle School. So we decided we wanted to at least leave the same number of parking spaces at the school when the project was finished as when we started. So we looked around at various places where to put the parking spaces. If you're familiar with the West Shore property, there are several acres of basically unused land to the rear of the school that have been dormant for years, that actually could be used for, for example, emergency parking because they're higher elevation. But in order to get to that unused land, we have to cross a very thin strip of wetlands. So we hired Silver Petricelli to prepare an application to the Inland Wetlands Commission to cross that wetlands to put forty parking spaces on the other side, which could eventually be expanded to four hundred spaces or whatever you want. You could put tennis courts back there, whatever. But the Inland Wetlands Commission wouldn't approve the application unless we agreed to basically reinstate comparable wetlands elsewhere and do other cleanup of invasive weeds. And we determined that that would cost about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to do that, so we decided rather than spend a hundred and twenty grand on parking, we would find parking elsewhere and spend the money on the construction and FFME. So what we decided to do was add a few more spaces toward the front of the school and a few spaces in the rear of the school, unfortunately, in a few residents' backyards, basically, to result in the same number of parking spaces after the project is completed as when it was started. Now, we determined that we needed the parking spaces not on a five-day-a-week, fifty-two-week basis, but based upon, basically, peak considerations. We asked the police department and the fire department to go to the school during an awards ceremony, and they counted like a hundred and fifty cars that were parked on city streets that would preferably be parked on the school. So that motivated us to not give up the twenty-five parking spaces that we lost during the construction.
Thank you for the background, Mr. Woods, and thank you for your service. It's very much appreciated. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any more discussion on the motion? Alderman Gorman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to either Mr. Woods or the mayor. So out of a total budget of twenty-two million, we can reasonably expect to get fifty percent reimbursement from the state, roughly?
Mr. Chair, through you to Mr. Woods. At this point, the reimbursement rate for Milford is fifty-point-seven, so about fifty-one percent reimbursement on all eligible costs. I think the vast, vast majority of all this construction is eligible. Mr. Silver would know if there's anything that's not eligible, but I think almost all of it is eligible reimbursements.
If I may-
Would that be correct, Mr.?
Under state reimbursement regulations, new construction is reimbursable. If you are replacing or repairing something, it's not reimbursable. So to the extent that any of the work that we're doing is repair or replacement, that's not reimbursable. And I think that the dollar amount is, how much? About four hundred thousand would not be reimbursable.
Alderman Veccharelli?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That fifty-one percent, when we did East Shore Middle School, what was it, forty-three percent reimbursement?
I don't recall offhand what the percentage was. It was lower.
Well, this seems, this seems higher, so they have increased the reimbursement, from what I can see. So fifty-one percent is, it seems higher than the last reimbursements that we've been getting.
It is higher.
Any more discussion on the motion? Alderman Frank Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Mr. Woods. Mr. Woods, the West Shore project is of particular importance because in my district, West Shore Middle School is my alma mater. It was K Avenue School when I went there, and I know many portions of K Avenue School, as I remember, it still exists in the central portion of the building, I think the prin- I can walk in there and, it's been years since I've been in there, but the boys' room looks exactly as it did in nineteen sixty-four, so actually, it's a little cleaner, but, but we've been hearing about for many years is, in West Shore, it parody with the other middle schools. There were certain educational imperatives, or there were educational matters of equity that we wanted to make West Shore, since, as somebody pointed out, as our greater population center for our, for our school district. I was at the dedication of the media center when I was on this board sixteen years ago, and you were there, Mr. Woods, with former Mayor Listman, and we were, it was when the, I don't know, it was when we were breaking ground or we were actually finishing the media center. And that same discussion was going on then. I understand, and I know my former colleague, Bob Nuno, telling me how he was moving carts around because of limited classroom space just a few years ago. So the needs are, I know are pressing, but as Alderman Veccharelli pointed out too, we've just gotten done with our East Shore Middle School improvement, which is at no small expense. Can you tell me, or perhaps somebody else can tell me, what, in terms of parity, if that's an important thing, but in terms of educational services are needed that have prompted this particular ordinance or this allocation request? Just some specifics about classroom size? I know there's a statement I've read over that details a summary of everything, but in terms of the other schools, as permanent schools being added so long, what is it that we need at West Shore that maybe exists at East Shore, at Harborside, that we need to upgrade?
Well, if I may, let me start with just square footage. The, what was then the K Avenue Elementary School was built in nineteen fifty and had twenty-six thousand square feet originally. Additions were made in nineteen fifty-six, nineteen seventy-two, nineteen ninety-four, nineteen ninety-nine, bringing the total square footage up to about seventy-three-thousand, one-hundred-and-ninety square feet. And when you're talking about square footage in the school, strangely enough, there are two different square footages. One is the square footage inside the school that you can use, and the other is the square footage of the footprint. And the footprint is thousands of square feet larger, but you can't use, you know, the thickness of the walls. So West Shore Middle School today has about seventy-three-thousand, one-hundred-and-ninety square feet. The East Shore Middle School currently has, after the addition that we put on, about eighty-one-thousand, seven-hundred-and-ninety-one square feet, and Harborside has about seventy-thousand, seventy-eight-thousand, three-hundred-and-twenty-one square feet. At East Shore, the net increase will be about an additional eight-thousand, ninety-five square feet.
Mr. Chair, that's at West Shore?
At West Shore. That's as far as square footage goes. As far as what we're actually going to be doing at West Shore, I'm not sure if you had the summary of what the project consists of, but basically, it will involve expansion of the gymnasium, classrooms, music and art departments, the administrative offices and the main entrance, all of which new work will be sprinkled. We will reconfigure the parking areas. The media center will be modernized. One computer room will be relocated and a new one created. The former three art and music spaces in the middle of the school have been reconfigured into two art classrooms and a new kiln and storage space. There will be certain infrastructure improvements which aren't very exciting but are necessary. New HVA systems, security systems, internet connectivity, alterations to the offices and classrooms. Roof sections that are more than twenty years old will be replaced, including classrooms, the gymnasium, the existing gym, the media center, classrooms and offices located throughout the school. So Alderman Smith, when we get finished with this project, you're not going to recognize the school, I don't think. Windows are being replaced everywhere except the cafeteria and the nineteen ninety-three classroom addition, which is another value engineering decision we made to save money. There'll be hazardous material abatement. We'll be replacing ceiling tiles, and there'll be fire- We'll be replacing ceiling, ceiling tiles, and there'll be fire suppression systems and new building alarm notifications throughout the school. So, when the project is completed, hopefully by opening of school in 2018, we believe that West Shore will be on parity with East Shore and Harborside.
Eubus Woods.
Alderman Bevan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Mr. Woods. If we're getting, I'm asking this because tomorrow morning I will start getting phone calls from voters in for people that live in the town, saying if we're going to spend approximately $24 million and we're getting 50% back, why aren't we just going for the 12 million now rather than the 24?
I'm sorry, I missed the last part of that question. Why are we not what?
If we're going to get 50% back and we are now looking to bond approximately $24 million and we're going to get 50% of that back, why wouldn't we just bond 12 million now?
Mr. Chair, if I could help answer Alderman Bevan's question, these are all reimbursable expenses. The state does not give us money until we actually send them the copies of the invoices from the contractors. I think it was Alderman Giannatassio or maybe Alderman Beer that talked about, or asked the question about how much we have towards our debt service and made the comparison as to what we spend each year versus what we contribute towards our debt service. The amount that's in the city's budget is only a portion of what we do to pay back our, our debt service, the total indebtedness that we have. Another portion of that comes from grants or the state reimbursement for schools. So, the state reimbursement for schools that we get back each year as we submit invoices goes directly towards paying off our bonds and our bands. Our bands are what we issue for the first two years, they're bond anticipation notes, and that gets directly paid off by the state reimbursement. And that's the structure that the state has come up with and employed for the last many, many decades. It's a reimbursable amount as opposed to a direct pay. I don't know why they do it that way, but that's how all 169 municipalities have to operate when they build a school or make improvements to their schools. It's a reimbursable amount as opposed to a direct pay.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Any more discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Roll call vote. Madam Secretary, please.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman Beatty?
Yes.
Alderman Bevan?
Yes.
Alderman Beer?
No.
Alderman Casey?
Yes.
Alderman Germain?
Yes.
Alderman Giannatassio?
Yes.
Alderman Golden?
Yes.
Alderman Grant?
Yes.
Alderman Hardiman?
Yes.
Alderman Shaw? Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Veccharelli? Alderman Vitro?
Yes.
Alderman Vitale?
Yes.
14 yes, 1 no, Mr.?
Vote was 14 yes, 1 no. Motion passes. Alderman Frank Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The ordinance committee, as already noted, met earlier this evening, considering a ordinance repealing Chapter 18, Planning Article 8, Redevelopment Agency, Section 18-107, Downtown Development Agency Designated 18-108, same powers, duties in 18-109, same boundaries. This is effectively a, a editing and a repeal of portions of the existing ordinance on the Downtown Development Agency that will comport that, the ordinance for that agency that is now Milford Progress to come in line with the existing Connecticut state statutes. As I said, this was, was considered by the ordinance committee earlier this evening and is recommended to the full committee with unanimous approval, and I would like to submit that, Mr. Chairman, as a motion.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none? Alderman Veccharelli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I was just wondering, we have seven members that would sit on this, on this board, and at the very bottom of the page, we have that any action taken by this, this board, it says shall be taken only by a majority vote of all members. So, if there's seven members, then you would have to have four members voting in favor, if I'm not mistaken, but it's like a majority vote of all members. So, I guess what I'm trying to say is, how many members would be needed for a quorum of a seven-member board? If maybe, I don't know if somebody could answer that?
Mr. Chair, through you to Alderman Veccharelli. Four.
Okay, so, they have to have four members for a quorum. And, you know, sometimes it's hard to get people out, you know, there's many different reasons and, and it, and it seems like most of the time that when a board meets, as long as they have enough members for a quorum, that they're able to take action on a, on a particular item with a majority vote. So, according to this here, the last sentence of this, on this here ordinance, it says that they would have to have a majority vote of all members. So, if four members showed up, which would be a quorum, they would have to have, everything that they did would have to be unanimously voted on. And I just wonder if, if that might be something that we should think about and, you know, would it, would it, should we have on that last paragraph that a majority vote of all members present and, present in voting? So that, you know, if you have four members, well, you'd need three to pass something with a quorum. So, I offer that for discussion because they may very well be able to get a quorum, but I'm not sure that, you know, you're always going to get a majority, a, an absolute unanimous vote. So, should we, you know, maybe change the last paragraph to, you know, say that, you know, a majority vote of all members present and voting, you know, as long as they have the quorum? I mean, I would imagine we, we may also have to put in there that they need four members for a quorum? I mean, or is Robert's rules basically going to also support that? So, I would offer that for some discussion.
Would anybody like to add to that or subtract from that?
Mr. Chairman, through you to Alderman Veccharelli. Sorry for the, the feedback. Alderman, or City Attorney Berchem is looking to see whether the language mirrors the state enabling language or whether it could be adjusted so that we do clarify that it's the majority of members present.
Budget cutbacks. Mr. Chair, through you to Alderman Veccharelli. I apologize, I was, in reviewing the statute, I will say that my focus in terms of revising the ordinance was simply to deal with MPI and not with the composition in terms of seven members and present. You raised a very good point, but that wasn't my focus in terms of the historical facts underlying what, how this ordinance was brought to your attention. MPI was designated as the city's redevelopment agency in 1985, November of 1985, it's handwritten in terms of the minutes that I reflected in. It was upon the request of MPI to be so designated by the Board of Aldermen so they could avail themselves for some grants. Fast forward to 2016, I had several meetings with the leadership of MPI, its chair, and I believe its vice chair and quasi-counsel, pro bono counsel, who asked me frankly to remove the designation because they were operating, I think they have 30-plus members, and they were operating in a way that was inconsistent with the ordinance, and there were some duplication of efforts in terms of downtown redevelopment agencies, if you will. You have our Economic Development Commission, the more recently formed Downtown Building Committee and such. In terms of your specific question, Alderman Veccharelli, in looking at Connecticut General Statute 8-126, any action by the redevelopment agency shall be taken only on the majority vote of all the members. So, you picked up on the nuance that's in the statute. So, simply put, I don't think this board can change the ordinance because the ordinance is a pattern after the statute. The enabling legislation of the statute under 8-126 requires, it's a majority vote of all the members.
Can you imagine if we had to comply with that on the Board of Aldermen? We would have to have a unanimous vote-
Sure, I can. You guys can agree on a lot of things.
On anything that we did, any business that the board took, doesn't seem to be that user-friendly, but, okay.
Every action you guys have taken tonight has been by the majority of the members.
Any more discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. At this point, we will return to Agenda Item 8F. Alderman Veccharelli, Agenda Item 8F.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the request for the attached resolution regarding the cash advance for various school improvements, 2017.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Veccharelli, Agenda Item 8G.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the request for the attached resolution regarding the cash advance for various public improvements for 2017.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Agenda item number nine, there is no new business tonight. Agenda item number 10, there are no budget memo transfers. Agenda item number 11, moving on to refunds, Alderman Veccharelli, Agenda Item Number 11A.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the refunds in the amount of $28,525.47.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Agenda item number 12, reports of standing committees. Alderman Frank Smith. You're all done. Thank you very much, Frank. Alderman Smith? Moving on to Agenda Number 13, are there any reports from any special committees? Seeing none. Close under item number 13, open under rule, under item number 14. The next item on the agenda is executive session. I will entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss, discussion of pending litigation, Greg Peters versus City of Milford. Joining us in executive session for items 14A and 14B will be the Mayor Ben Blake, the City Attorney Assistant, City Attorney Debbie, Deborah Kelly, and HR Director Tanya Barnes. Is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman. Here's a second.
Motion has been made and seconded to go into executive session, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, if you could announce the people going into executive session with the board?
I did. We're in executive session. We're out of executive session. Alderman Veccharelli.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to approve the settlement that was discussed in executive session.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.